I will call the Thursday, October tenth, Council meeting to order at seven o'clock.
Let's release her. We're not wasting time today.
There you go.
Let's be just to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic where we just stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, and limited.
Like just now.
Oh, look. Thank you, Pam.
Bro. Mrs. Conley.
I am here.
Mr. Bro. Mr. Marvel.
Here.
Mr. Maxson.
Here.
Ms. Powell.
Here.
Ms. Ray.
Here.
Ms. Asherson is here.
I would.
Now entertain emotion and we don't need an emotion. Everybody's here. We're all here. Now it is time for public comments. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meetings that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address to the record if you would like. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak?
Christmas is coming. Seventy-five days. Or Hanukkah, Hanukkah. They're on the same day this year.
Same every year.
Hopefully, everybody's gonna make use of the new pocket park. I'm not sure if they're gonna finalize that or not, but we talked that that'd be a great spot for the city to hand out candy and use the bathrooms there.
We're doing.
So I didn't know if she did. Last I talked to her, that's what I was thinking.
But Pam was organizing that, so.
Talk to our, um, the, I talked to our people who were here at Red Flannel and part of the thing is, um, we're gonna be open for voting.
Until four thirty.
Started at four.
What time are we starting?
Five thirty, five thirty to seven thirty. I read the sign that the road was closing at four. They assumed that it started at four. That's what you're getting four o'clock.
And that was, I was being told that and so. But I'm planning to be here wherever here is, at whatever time here is.
Spring Church is doing their trunk retreating in their lot. The Methodist is doing theirs in their lot. The brewery has, because it falls on a Thursday, so they have their jeep trunk retreating in the brewery.
Good place to like plug in lights and if we do it over in the pocket park for the city.
Insulates.
Why don't we, um, talk about that as the city? Let's just get the, um, the event taken care of. We'll get that all planned out.
Okay.
Forward, the Baptist church is taking the year off, so they won't be trunk retreating up there this year or this way. And so, and we've got some of them signed up for Main Street and from what I understand.
Meeting, but I'm, I am planning on being the person. I just need someone to tell me where and I have stuff I can bring and.
Library is setting up, um, up there by the clock tower in the library area by the sidewalk, so. And then there's the celebration of lights on the twenty-third. According to Facebook, we could have a good turnout for that. Uh, and then the Christmas parade on the first Saturday in December. Hopefully, everybody makes it out to that. Vote again maybe this year if you're.
We're planning it.
Maybe you have any questions on that? If not, I'll wait till the New Year's is up.
Anybody else? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to give a public comment?
Public present on Zoom.
Hearing no additional public comment, we will invite the auditors to the podium to present the annual audit report.
I try. All right.
To you, like you, I mean, we've done this so many times and you're always awesome.
Report, so that's nice. Um, but thank you for having me, um, to present the June thirty, twenty twenty-four year ended audit. Uh, this was Emily's first year going through, getting it everything ready and it, it turned out good. I, do you have the books in front of you? Okay, so I'll just hit a few pages and then I've got some, some slides as well, but on page one, that's, that's the page where our opinion is. Let's see, independent auditor's report. In the second paragraph down, it says, in our opinion, the statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city. That's a good, unmodified report and certainly what you want to have when you have an audit done. In addition to the financial statement audit, we also look closely at your internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations. And that report is found way in the very back of the book on page forty-nine. You don't need to flip there, but there's, there's no issues that we noted that we reported in there either. So a good, clean audit. Three through eight, this is your management discussion and analysis. I don't usually spend too much time in here, but it's more of a, an oversight of your financial state. Birds, I like numbers better, so we go to the numbers, but just a few, the financial highlights kind of gives you a, a, um, a brief overview right at the top of page three. The, the grants that were received, um, installation of a new well with some, um, ARPA money, um, major local street work being done and continued development in the city. So that pages nine through eleven of the report. This is called the, uh, the statement of net position. It's your full accrual basis financial statement is called, so it's meant to look more like a business would be presented, so it has all of your assets and liabilities, um, your, your capital assets, your long-term debt, your pension liabilities all here. So Rebecca, if you can just flip to the first slide there. So right at the bottom of page nine, you can see unrestricted net position of two point five million in your governmental activities. The governmental activities is pretty much everything the city has and does other than the water and sewer. So everything else is in the, is in governmental activities, but it's two point five billion. That's a good positive number. And then the, the page ten and eleven is your income statement or statement of activities and you can see the bottom line on page eleven. Net position is about five lines up, about five hundred seventy-nine thousand, so that's positive. The business type activities were up as well and we'll get to a little more detail on that. But just this, this visual picture here just tells you of all the revenues in the governmental activities, where is it coming from? And you can see fifty-two percent of it comes from property taxes, eleven from state shared revenues, sixteen percent from charges for services. And I compared this to last year's pie chart and it was just way out of whack last year because last year you received a, a significant number of capital grants in for twenty twenty-three, so that really skewed the pie, but this is more normal and, and how, how it usually looks every year. And then the next one, Rebecca. Rebecca, the next slide. Oh, thank you. Sorry. I, I, there's a computer delay. Sorry. So th- this slide shows you a comparison of the expenses which are the, the bright, bright blue bar to your program or direct revenues associated with each of the, the areas, the, each of the functions in the government. So general government, for example, you can see the, the blue bar exceeds your program revenues. And what is in that program revenue number there is, um, a lot of charges for services, for example, the, there's, um, a big one was your marijuana application fees for the shops, um, that kind of thing is in there. And then, uh, public safety, you can see there's a big gap. Streets looks a little weird because expenses are less than your program revenues. And in the streets, the program revenues includes your Act fifty-one money, for example, that you receive. But the streets that are built are capitalized, so they aren't expenses. So that's why the revenue actually looks higher than the expenses in that, in that situation. But just to give you a, a little of an idea of, and, and what this is showing you is now the differences between the expenses and revenues. That's what your property tax and state shared revenue is covering. So this is just the direct revenues. There's also, we call it the, the general revenues, which is your property taxes, the millage, the interest earnings and state shared revenues. Then jumping ahead to the pages twelve through, I gotta get ahead to twelve through fifteen. This is your fund financial statements and this is more the basis of accounting that you typically see your monthly reports in when you get those to, to take a look at. And just page twelve, the third line from the bottom, you can see unassigned fund balance in the general fund. I kind of focus on the general fund here, which is the left-hand column of numbers of one point five million in unassigned funds. So that's a very positive as well. And if you go ahead, a couple pages, um, the general fund, page fourteen, the general fund increased from prior year by a hundred, almost a hundred and fifteen thousand. So, so positive in the general fund. And then just by way of comparison to several, for several years, we look at some of the trends of the significant revenue sources just in the general fund. And you can see property taxes for the last five years have just been steadily increasing there. Uh, state shared revenue has been pretty level for the last three years and then other is up quite a bit. And the primary driver there for this year was, um, a big increase in your interest revenue was the interest rates going up. Um, those got invested and interest this year was about a hundred and forty-nine thousand, so. Very positive. That was across all the funds, not just the general fund, but a big number. Is just a, a little bit more history on property taxes going back ten years. And you can see again, it, it went up steadily until twenty twenty and it jumped in twenty-one and now it's just been on a steady increase since then. I didn't go back and look, there might have been a millage increase at that time. I don't remember.
And more, more pieces of property.
Yeah.
Houses more.
So that's good. So it's been going up steadily. Okay, the next slide, this one's a little weird. This is your general fund expenditures and you can see, again, just the functions, general government, public safety, public works. But the general government, you can see s- significant increase in expenses this year. So let's go to page forty-one. I have my notes on two different play pages here. Okay. So you can see, um, yeah, a big jump in general government. You can see that's about right in the middle of the page is your total general government right there. And the actual amounts, a million sixty-four. The budget was one point two million, so you actually did finish ahead of your budget in the, in general government. But the big driver of that was the fees paid to the city attorney for ongoing, uh, ex- exploration, I guess I'll call it, rather than litigation at this point. But, but as far as the, the PFAS issue that's going on in the city, so it's a very significant increase and that's really the, the bulk of what the increase was there. Uh, there was, you can see you finished ahead of budget and, and several areas. Um, there were some, some, uh, open positions, et cetera, that weren't, uh, weren't covered. Uh, public safety, a little bit further down, was ahead of budget by about a hundred and fifty-three thousand. Uh, there were some capital items budgeted that didn't get in the works during the fiscal year, so those have been carried over to the following year. And then, uh, recreation and culture, you can see you finished two hundred and thirty-eight thousand ahead of budget. And that's because the Pocket Park project was all budgeted in twenty-four. Part of it got done, but not all of it, so, so that was rebudgeted for twenty-four, twenty-five. So, but at the end of the day, you finished, you finished in good shape. Of that. Yeah, recreation, I mentioned the Pocket Park project got started. That's why that bar is up a little bit. The, uh, public safety area, that's up. Uh, there was an increase in the police contract for the year and also the first year, I believe, of a full-time fire employee. So it was driving those up. And then another thing we look at in the general fund, you switch to the next one. Is the, uh, unassigned fund balance. Says a percent of expenditures and transfers. So you can see that's down just a little bit, but still, uh, historically, it's been right around the sixty to eighty percent. Um, the rule of thumb is to not let that slide below, below twenty-five percent, so you're still in really good shape and just, just a little bit under sixty percent there, so. Higher expenses this year, so that of course drives that percentage down when we do the comparison. And just a couple things on water and sewer funds. They're both looking good as well, but starting on page sixteen for those. Another page, a positive unrestricted net position of one point nine million in sewer fund, one point seven in the water fund, so that's, that's good. Uh, the other thing we look at closer in the water sewer fund is the, um, cash and cash equivalents right at the top of the page. You can see that's at one point eight million in both the water and sewer funds, so cash position's good, net position's good. And you can see on page seventeen, right in the middle of the page, another thing we keep our eye on is the operating income. You can see it was positive in both funds, so that just means that your, your charges are exceeding your operating expenses. And I should point out, included in the operating expenses is your, the depreciation of the facilities. So that's being covered by your, by your charges and that's what you, you want to see. So that's very good.
While with the water treatment plant. Problem. So that's really.
It's good. Yeah. Right, almost right. Smack in the middle of the page, you can see federal grant, three hundred and eighty-nine, nine eighty-four. And that's the cost. I think I mentioned it right in the, on page three, the, um, the new well that was drilled, it got a federal grant for that, used up ARPA money. Covered the last two slides. Yeah, that was all, but these are, these are just graphics of the same information I just mentioned. You can see the, the green revenue line exceeds the red expense line, so that's good. This includes all of the expenses and revenues, not just the operating, so. So those are in good shape. And then just a couple footnotes, page twenty-seven. Just add more details to some of the numbers in the statements. Uh, there's just a couple of, uh, over expenditures on the budget, which are not a big deal. They've been reported to the state. The state was fine. Right in the middle, near the bottom there, you can see there's restricted cash and cash equivalents. A couple of your USDA, um, bond. I guess it's one bond, but in both the water and sewer fund, they have a, a requirement for cash restriction, so we're required to disclose that here as restricted cash. And on the two-page letter I gave you, I did mention one thing. It's not a big deal and it's not, not bad by any means, but you are able to use this reserve for replacement and improvements number. Um, historically, that number's just been added to every year until it gets to a certain threshold and then you leave it. But you are allowed to use that on, for certain repairs and, and improvements on the water system or sewer system. So I just, i- in my, my notes, I just said, you may need to get approval for that, but you could probably go back and look and see if you can just get, use some of the restricted cash and put it into regular cash. Now, I mentioned your regular cash is in good shape, so it's not, like I said, it's not a huge deal, but, but if, uh, if you can get it unrestricted, why not?
DA, does it say that band was, that was a fifteen-year? The one for the water treatment plant?
It was issued in two thousand fifteen. I think it's longer than, longer than that.
Fifty-five is one that expired.
Yeah. It was probably, yeah, it was a forty-year bond when it was issued. Yep.
Six million? That was what turned the tide on being able to like, really like make it work.
When it was issued, it was, looks like it was just over three million. There's, um, in the sewer piece of it, there's one point eight million outstanding and seven hundred and sixty thousand outstanding in the water fund yet. I'm looking at page thirty. That's where all the detail of your debt is. It's at two point seven five percent, so that's a really good rate. The only other thing, uh, you do have a defined benefit pension plan here and one thing that people like to keep their eye on is the funded percentage. So on page thirty-nine, this gives you a ten-year, ten-year look back at the funding of the, of the defined benefit plan. And you can see back in twenty nineteen, or twenty fourteen, rather, it was at ninety percent and then it's fluctuated up and down with market variations and so forth. And in twenty twenty-three, which is the actuarial valuation date, twelve thirty-one, twenty-three, it's at seventy-seven percent funded, so that's in good shape.
Need to be at, is it, there, there's a state mandated percentage? Is it fifty percent?
Yeah.
Advocating, we should go down there. I just.
You're, you're above the state mandate.
Yeah.
So, yeah. I don't remember if it's sixty-five or if there's a lower threshold to look at too, but it's.
Step up over years they wanted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, but yours has stayed very well funded and you really, you aren't putting a lot of any extra money into it. I mean, one year you put an extra fifty thousand into it, but other than that, you're just keeping up with it and you're, you adopted a hybrid plan, so it's kind of a mix between defined benefit, defined contribution, so it's, it's holding its own pretty good, it looks like, so. Any other exciting things you see in there that I can answer questions on? I, that was all I was gonna present?
I'm happy, very, very happy.
And the community has been staying ahead of the things.
Yeah.
Water. Thank, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
She always comes back.
Yeah, that's right. We'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Additions or corrections needed to the agenda? It looks like there's seven C. We're adding seven C's.
Agreement for Second Street parking lot. It was at your table here tonight when you got here.
You don't need a motion, right?
I'm amended.
Oh, okay. I will make a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of seven C, a motion to, I'm looking for it. What, what she said.
In the city of Cedar Springs. I'll second. Is there any discussion? And they were creating the Second Street parking lot and parking around there. And, uh, I would support it. Conley.
Yes. Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mr. Maxson.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes. Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Ms. Ash is gonna vote yes. Passes seven zero. Moving on to the consent agenda.
And Mayor, I would like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Any discussion?
On agenda.
Are, are you here to talk to us about the, um?
Any questions there for the wastewater? There's quite a few items on there for wastewater stuff.
Yes, um, I know you wouldn't be asking for them if they weren't needed. That's my stand on it. You come up here and, and let's introduce who you are. I know, that's all right. Come up here, cause then, cause we gotta get it on Zoom too.
Yeah, 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 no worries, no worries. Uh, Russ Johnson, I work for the city of Cedar Springs.
He is our new lead operator.
Yes, utilities, utilities, utilities. Yeah, one aspect or another, right? Right?
City of Cedar Springs employees.
Yes. Grateful.
Very happy.
I'm happy too. Having a lot of fun doing it, so I haven't got into the meat and potatoes yet. It's still fun.
We're on the wastewater treatment and on the consent agenda.
We're just doing all these repairs because we're still under IAI.
Yeah, so, um, most of this stuff, really, if, if we can just go on a broad stroke, I guess. Um, everybody knows, like, I know you were out at the tour, you were out at one of the tours with Gary and myself. Thirty, it'll be thirty years old next year. It's a thirty-year-old wastewater. Things are gonna start breaking, um, because the contract is going away with infrastructure alternatives. There's some things in there that, that is nothing to do with those guys. Nobody was neglecting the planet or anything, but since we're trying to take it over on a clean slate, that's all it is. Um, there's a couple items on here, like, um, let me see here, like air release valves for the drain field, they go bad over time. Um, there's a couple that are stuck. That is our motive pumps. You guys remember in the basement, those pumps that stand up on edge like this? There's, uh, seven of those in the basement. We have a spare. One of them broke. We had to put the spare on. So now we have no spare, which is why that's on here. That's, that's a really important one, so. Um, and then other things too, like the, um, the ferret conduit, that's item H. We had an incident out at the plant probably two months ago where we're having electrical issues in the ferret chloride room. Ferret chloride is a chemical you add to the waste treatment. It's very corrosive. It stains everything. That's why that, that room is orange. It's, it kind of hides the stains. If you spill a little bit, it makes the room turn red, you know, in apropos for Halloween, red room. Anyway, so they, after that happened, we got everything working again. But we started digging into it, like, it's, it's one of those things where you don't know there's a problem until you start digging into it and you're like, okay. We got it back up and running again, but there's a bunch of other stuff we have to fix because the ferret chloride just chews metal up like crazy, so. Yeah, but it's nothing egregious here. It's nothing, uh, that isn't age-related. It's really just thirty years. Oh.
It's ama- it isn't, isn't it supposed to not last thirty years?
You're at, before major repairs is usually twenty. And we've done some major repairs too, but nothing crazy.
Like, when the roof was starting to be a thing, I remember, it was like.
Membrane on there, yes.
Yeah.
Twenty years old, that's what happens. I don't know if anybody's house has a roof that'll last like fifty years, anybody? This is a flat, you got a slate one?
Nineteen forty until a tornado took it off.
But you know what? The plant, it's a flat roof with a, with a rubber membrane and the stone cover and all that stuff, so doesn't last for.
Twenty, twenty years is, no, not, yeah, great.
Yeah, but any questions, like anything you guys want to ask about anything specific? It's just because we, we know this transition is happening. It's, it's November sixth, right?
Ten.
Ten, November ten, okay, so, but it's coming up. We just want to make sure everything's on, up and up before the transition happens. Yeah, no worries. Yeah.
Before it's catastrophic is.
The whole goal, right? That absolutely. I don't want to be up at, you know, two o'clock in the morning on a Saturday because something that I could have fixed earlier is broke. I don't want to do that, so.
Out whenever.
You guys all know what happens out there, so. But no, but any questions, I, I'm gonna stick around for the agenda stuff, but if you have any questions on specific things, please ask. But no, but any questions, I, I'm gonna stick around for the agenda stuff, but if you have any questions on specific things, please ask. Okay, yes.
All right, can we approve the um, yeah, a motion to approve the consent agenda? We already had that. That was a discussion. Okay, let's vote. Mrs. Conley.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mr. Maxim.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yeah.
Mrs. Race. Ms. Asherson votes yes, seven zero. Moving on then.
Action.
Items, a motion to approve the New Year's Ball Drop Community Event for December thirty first, twenty twenty-four. Seven thirty PM to two AM with road closure on street from Ash Street to Oak Street.
And Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the New Year's Eve Ball Drop Community Event for December thirty first as presented.
Support. Mrs. Falcon, do you have anything to say?
It's Ash Street to Maple, Maple, not Oak.
Okay.
So that's wrong. That's all right. Do we need to?
My motion to be Ash Street to Maple?
To have the traffic have an exit.
On Main Street, when we get rid of it. Park it close off the west side. Elm, road closure. How do we have it? Do we have events?
Well, the idea was so that we can still have the ball drop in that element, have it tangentially two blocks east direction when we're closed off. One block one way, two blocks the other.
All traffic would go to Oak. And all traffic would go to Oak.
We, I mean, we, we have a creek.
First street, because a lot of people will go to Second Street to go around.
And that's, and that is, see, that is the challenge. Is Second Street doesn't go to Oak Street. So they can't go around it at that direction. So I, I could understand exactly what, what the concern is. You don't have a equal route to get around Main Street if you don't, if you do go clear to Oak Street.
The south side of Maple, and that worked?
Yeah.
He was. Gary, come up here.
You're.
In the bigger crowd, that's why we ask for a block each direction.
We'll have to go east-west.
Anger.
The only exception to that is Red Flannel Day, because they'd use Maple Street both ways for the parade to end. And, but it does make traffic to Oak Street somewhat hectic, so.
The opposite direction? For your expansion?
Yeah.
The area where the ball is dropping, we could move.
Yeah, that's Elm.
We can move that Elm room from here farther out.
Further out.
Off their boom.
Main Street closed, right?
Main and Elm Street closed along with Mill, Main.
Where the ball's gonna drop, probably not to the east. That's where the crane is at.
Right.
We could, arbitrarily west, allow more people to go down that area.
See it.
Yeah, to the, to the fire station.
Yeah, but you don't know.
You do not want to not have access to a fire truck.
Fire trucks always have to go out.
Yeah.
We were, last year we had a good crowd. Probably we had a lot of wounds.
See, yeah, they were way more than four hundred. If you look at some of them pictures.
But if I was standing on Main Street.
So.
On Ash.
I will make the motion to amend it to whatever.
To, do we need a little more time to figure this out before we vote on it? Or do you think we can get this?
I would say we can vote on it.
Okay, yeah, let's do that.
Approve the event and leave the, the specifics to the. So I will make a new motion. I withdraw my former motion, and I will make a motion to approve the New Year's Eve Ball Drop Community Event for December thirty first, twenty twenty-four, seven thirty PM to two AM, with road closures to be determined by the city manager and the police sergeant and the fire chief.
One motion's on the floor. It's owned by the board, so you can't withdraw it. So what you can do is vote it down. Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, let's vote on the first.
Okay.
Was it seconded? So was that?
Conley and Race.
You're right, you're right. I forgot she had seconded it, so that's fine.
Let's vote, and then I'll make a new motion.
Mr. Gross.
No.
Mr. Maxim.
No.
Mr. Marvel.
No.
Mrs. Race.
No.
Mrs. Conley.
No.
Powell.
No.
Ms. Ash is about to know. Now state your new motion.
Then Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the New Year's Eve Ball Drop Community Event for December thirty first, twenty twenty-four. Seven thirty PM to two AM with road closures to be determined by the city manager, the fire chief, and the police sergeant.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
It till.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Is, are you expecting a crowd till two AM?
To clean up.
Yeah. That's why I was wondering.
Then we're putting until twelve thirty.
All right. I didn't think you wanted a big crowd out there till.
Dude, they're gonna be there until three.
Yeah.
Probably need to like move the crane and stuff, which requires some cleanup, we know.
I think we, everything was all buttoned up and everybody was gone, crane wise, fire pits, everything before too, so.
Yes.
Mr. Maxim.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
And Ms. Asherson votes yes. Passes seven zero. Moving on to action, item seven B, motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven. A resolution extending social district hours in the city of Cedar Springs on December thirty first, twenty twenty-four and January first, twenty twenty-five.
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, a ru- resolution extending the social district hours in the city of Cedar Springs on December thirty first, twenty twenty-four and Ja- and January first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Falcon, do you have anything to?
No, this is for that event, so.
Like extension of how long? The hours were extended it to.
Twelve thirty, right?
Twelve thirty.
That's it. Okay.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Race.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mr. Maxim.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Ms. Asherson votes yes, passes seven zero.
Well, moving on to item seven C, motion to approve a reciprocal easement agreement between Laura Ensley and the city of Cedar Springs. Ms. Falcon.
Patrick and Laura Ensley, they both own seventy-one North Main Street, the business. So part of the parking lot is on their private property. And the city owning the Second Street parking lot, we cannot, um, we have to allow them access. We can't land lock a parcel. So this is the only way we can grant them access through the Second Street parking lot to their property. Literally what this explains, and then the map on the back, on the back, you can see the last, to the east are, that's Ensley's private property. And then their parking lot actually goes up behind their building, but, so all of that is their property.
And, and Cronkright's have some property parking too, no?
Yes, so there's another agreement, an easement, that is recorded for this same Second Street parking lot parcel between CBDT and the Cronkright family that we have to honor as well. So they already have an easement agree, approved. We don't need a new one. But in that agreement, they, um, the Cronkright family was promised two parking stalls in this parking lot. So I need to work with them on signage. My proposal is the two parking spaces on the southeast corner of the city property parking lot be reserved for fifty-five North Main tenants. I still have to work on those two signs, plus three signs for the Ensley lots.
Excellent.
Sounds great.
Pay for their signs.
They're reimbursing us for their portion of the paving and engineering and all that stuff. Yep.
The motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to honor a reciprocal easement agreement uh, on, I'm looking for the language, with Patrick and Laura Ensley at seventy-one North Main Street, Cedar Springs, Michigan, and the city of Cedar Springs in a mu- municipal corporation. Um, I'm, I'm just kinda making this as I go. Okay.
I'll just make one motivation. You're approving the, not honoring the agreement.
You're approving the agreement.
So she put seventy-one north.
Yeah, that's.
Ensley's a- address.
Any discussion?
Hearing none.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
Mrs. Race.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mr. Maxim.
Yes.
Vote yes.
We have no discussion items. I'll go into communications. Extra communications that we need. No? Um, and I'll, the other um, moving on to department reports, city manager.
So last month, um, I was up at Mackinac Island along with council member Race for the MML. Their annual um, educational seminar. Very good, it's very well attended, I thought. Some good resources. I, I forgot to scan them into this packet, so I'll scan them in and, and put them in next month's packet. Um, a lot on artificial intelligence. Um, I know Renee attended a couple of those sessions as well. Um, another good one that I attended was on healthcare. Um, we got a rate increase, uh, just shy of ten percent rate increase on health insurance. So Emily and I have already had a conference with our um, healthcare people. We, we need to look at other uh, healthcare plans. And then we got a rate increase for our dental plan, and that went up by seventeen percent. So we had a phone call today with our dental provider. We need to find another plan to, it, it's just healthcare is getting out of hand. I mean, we, we need to offer our employees a different plan to keep the premiums down. So we're working on all that. Um, don't forget, we're closed. City Hall is closed to the public on Monday, but uh, staff will be here. That's um, gives us a day when we can do cleanup and record retention and all that good stuff. So that's, that's our plan for Monday. Um, like I mentioned earlier, I did promote Russ Johnson to the lead utility operator. We are accepting applications for the utility operator. So those two positions will run our treatment plan and do the water part of everything for the city. What else? Our security cameras are all up and running. Um, we've, we've already had to access the footage for what happened here last night or there, you know, whatever, and um, very helpful. Um, we've successfully transitioned to PCI for our building permits and rental inspections and all that stuff. Um, between Deb and I, we've already signed about six zoning app permits, applications and forwarded them to PCI, so um, I, I unfortunately missed, uh, the, the folks at PCI stopped by City Hall a couple times, and I haven't met them yet. I, I met a couple, but the ones that are gonna be coming here doing the inspections, I, I would like to meet with those people, so I'll put that on my list to, to meet those folks. Um, and then in your packet, uh, the master plan for the, the surveys for the master plan came back and our um, Andy Moore, our city planner, he and his staff put them all in a report. Um, it's in your packet tonight, so planning, planning commission just got it last week, so we haven't even really um, dove into it too deep. That's what we'll be doing over the next several months at the planning commission meetings, so if you wanna look at that and give, give comments or whatever. That's what we, what, what we'll be doing over the next couple months. That's all I have.
You and Councilor Race for attending that training. Tanya on Public Works?
Yeah, I'm here. So I feel like we've been pretty busy. We got the um, corner of Main and Muskegon fixed on the southwest corner where it was crumbling and falling apart. They put a rolling curb in there, so now hopefully when the trucks go over, it's smoother and it lasts longer, hopefully. Um, we got the flannels put up and taken down. We flushed hydrants, hauled in twelve loads of brush, got the parking lot on Second Street completed. Parking spaces on Maple. And steps put in at the fire station. That's really about it. It's busy.
Town, the town looks really nice.
Thank you. I'll let the staff and the DPW department know.
It was just lovely for Red Flannel. You really, you had it really polished up.
Yeah, we tried to get everything string trimmed and mowed before.
Wonderful.
It went pretty good. Thanks. That's all I got. What's that?
Really clean the next day too, just done.
Yeah, there was a lot of trash, and it was hard to blow the sidewalks off because the wind kept blowing, so you'd blow them off and it'd blow back up.
We, we did, we did empty the trash out in the front one because we just couldn't stand it anymore.
Be back on that. We've also had a very busy fall with all the special events, the Red Flannel Festivals, uh, very busy for us. I think everything went fairly smooth. Um, I think it went off without a hitch, so we have several more special events coming up, Halloween, Christmas tree lighting parade. Celebration of lights, I guess.
Bird told me that you're retiring.
The ball drop. True, I am retiring.
Number first.
Wow. That'll give me one month shy of twenty-nine years.
Wanted to go another month just to hit twenty-nine?
Have a cake or something, yeah.
Sure.
Do you have a replacement lined up?
Put out the request Tuesday, I believe, so they have seven days to put letters in for it. There's already a couple sergeants that, that have already put in for it. So then after a week, then we'll get a pool together, and then they'll work on, they're gonna interview for the spot, so I think Darla's gonna participate in it with uh, the command staff and go from there. They're going to interview for the spot, so I think Darla's going to participate in it with the command staff and go from there.
Heard about that at Red Flannel, so.
Secret got out, yes.
We've recommended our community very highly to all those who have applied.
Surprising to me that it's been six and a half years already that I've been up here and it has just flown by. I've, I've really enjoyed it.
True.
We're gonna, we're gonna miss you. There are going to be big shoes to fill. Do you have a preference of cake flavor?
Would Darla say to be determined?
TBD.
Any, any guesses on how many people were here for Red Flannel? I've had a lot of people ask me.
Biggest Red Flannel I've been a part of.
And just a lot of people. I mean, any, it's hard to get cell connectivity.
Time closure on Friday night, so I think that went well. Made, made Saturday morning so much easier. The vendors were able to come in and really start setting up properly on Friday night, too, so. It made it a lot nicer. We had more cars I've ever seen in the event as well, so.
Food trucks, like to every kind of terrible for you food that could possibly be had.
Because I was out of town, but I did see the way it looked like Second Street was already beginning to fill up with people parking along the edge of the road. Almost appeared that you're going to have a one-way street in there, and that's something we're going to have to take a look at. That's a major route out for the fire equipment.
It was narrow.
Parking signs along First Street on one side of the road and on Second Street, one side of the road. Normally we do have no parking on the sides to open it up.
Make a list.
For the new guy, will you?
Not reminding you.
Fire Department, have a guess on how many people?
Unfortunately, I was here by First Red Flannel.
Fire Department.
Yeah, so from what I've heard from my deputy chief, everything seemed to go really well. I did not hear any complaints about Second Street, surprisingly, but that doesn't always mean it wasn't an issue. Thankfully, we're slowing down as far as calls go, like almost a 19% reduction from September of last year, so that's good, but that doesn't mean we're not busy because it's fall. So, you know, we have lots of food trucks and all things on that. We go to pick up our water donation from Ice Mountain tomorrow. So we got a pallet from them, our new gears here. So that's going through, so we'll get all that stuff going through, starting to get all that in. I have a firefighter's actually starting his next step in his education, going into firefighter one and two.
Wonderful.
And we've added another medical personnel, so Kelly Seawood. So the quotes should be back for the new truck this month, so hopefully I have something to present for you for November. Good idea. And other than the steps, thank you, DPW. That's, that's pretty much it.
When there's an accident and there's like junk all over the road and stuff, is the, the company that comes to pick up the cars supposed to clean that up?
The tow truck operators are supposed to clean that up, but we help. We don't leave that stuff out because we don't want anybody getting into any more accidents or stuff going in tires. Usually if the car's totaled, we'll put all the equipment and stuff that puts up that comes off, we'll put it in the vehicle itself. But it's usually the tow truck drivers that actually clean that up. Was there an issue with cleaning up an area?
On one of the corners about two weeks ago, and I thought that was quite unusual, actually.
Very unusual. I will have a talk with the officers, make sure that our stuff is cleaned up and make sure they don't leave it unpresented, so.
City clerk?
We are down to the wire for this next election coming up in November, so we are full swing election mode. We have sent out, excuse me, sent out 425 absentee ballots currently. We have 130 of those returned. So we are on a good path to see a high return of those as well. In the next couple of weeks, those will really start coming back. So we're working through those and getting them entered and whatnot. All of our election inspector shifts are filled. We've got a great team that has filled all of those shifts, so. It's something that we really can't do without those individuals, so I can't say thank you enough to them. Testing went well on all of the equipment, public accuracy went well. Early voting is starting October 26th, and that goes through November 3rd, and that is 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM. And then Election Day, November 5th, 7 AM to 8 PM. That's about all I have. Other things too, but that election is the, the big focus currently, so.
Locked, the, the voting machine was locked. We were down one bathroom because we had to secure the voting machine, and that was the only place to do it.
Finance director?
Yeah, so now that the audit is complete, I've been able to shift my focus to some other areas. You will see some budget. My microphone's running away. You'll see some budget amendments in the next month or two. First round of those for the current fiscal year. I've also got some annual reports that I've got to get done for the prior fiscal year. Usually those have to be done within a couple of months of the audit being completed by, usually by the end of the calendar year. So I'll be busy getting those around. This morning, April and I attended a seminar on ESTA, which is the Earn Sick Time Act, which that's going to be interesting coming up because that's supposed to take effect on February 21st of next year, and there's just a lot of things to work out with that, so. We're going to have to start looking at our policies and see what we need to modify and how we can incorporate that into what we already have, so. That's going to take a lot of focus in the next couple of months, and like Darla said, we're looking at some other options for medical and dental, so. Yeah, some other areas to focus on there.
Right, at this time I would entertain a motion to go into closed session for a periodic personal evaluation pursuant to MCL 15.268A.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session for a periodic personal evaluation pursuant to MCL 15.268A.
I'll second that.
Mr. Gross?
Mister?
Maxim?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Race?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
It's Ask, some votes, yes. Going to go into closed session? Where do you go?
I will make a motion, Madam Mayor, to go back into open session at 8:55.
I'll support that motion.
We're back into open session, 8:55.
Your rule call first.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Marvel?
Yes.
Mr. Marvel?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Race?
Yes.
And Ms. Aches, and vote yes. We're back in session, 8:56. Anybody want to have, do we want any discussion on our? We all are really in a consensus that Mrs. Falcon is doing a wonderful job as the city manager. And we've talked about goals in our closed session that we want to come about. She's had some goals, city has some goals, and we're in consensus on working along to. Yeah, and we've gone, we went through challenges that the city manager faces and ongoing things, so. But everything is going well. We're continuing to grow and we'll move on to council comments. Mr. Maxum?
I'd like to congratulate Rose on her last council meeting. Be a stranger. And I would also, I know it's in the process of being chewed on and chewed over and worked on. But I would like to thank all the people of the city that participated in the master plan survey. And we're starting to, I read through it and I'm sure everybody's starting to digest that. So I would like to thank everyone who let their voices be heard.
We love that.
Thank you. Mr. Gross?
I agree on many things. One of the things that kept coming out to me in the comments was about the water. And it may have been just a few people. If those people happen to be listening, I'd be more than appreciative if you would bring in samples of your water. And I'm sure they can test it here at the city hall and determine if there's a problem in there that doesn't meet the standards of the state for drinking and use of water, so. And I understand there were some of the other things in there that are frustration based on code enforcement and so forth. That's been discussed a little bit this evening and being worked on. Unfortunately, codes have to be applied and enforced. Sometimes the means and the way it's done is something that needs to be worked on. So I believe that's probably going to happen. Other than that, I believe we're moving ahead and moving in the right direction. That's it.
Mr. Marvel?
You had a good meeting? And yeah, Red Flannel Day was awesome. I mean, it takes a team to put something like that together. I mean, that's, just the planning behind that is amazing, so. Well, the direction the city's heading, we're heading in the right direction, so. Get out and vote. Elections are important, so get out and vote.
Mrs. Powell?
Okay, what was I gonna say? Forgot already. I'll give you a planning commission report. We're working on the short-term rentals and trying to develop that, and it's kind of complicated and involves a zoning and it's, we're gonna, we're just gonna, it's gonna take some time for us to get a lot of that stuff figured out. It's not an easy task. And anyway, Jerry and Mike and Braden, Lisa, Renee, Pam, what a pleasure it's been to work with you guys the last 10 years. And for me, one of the biggest pleasures for me is to see what's happened at the heart of the park. 10 years ago, it was a scrapyard, it was junk, it was just a horrible mess. And we've been blessed with so many gifts and so many working, hard-working people. It just, when the Rose Powell Day came along, I thought, it wouldn't have, it couldn't have happened without all the people that have supported me and I've supported them, but they are, we have amazing people in this community. There's no two ways about it. Anyway, I'll stick with planning commission, DDA, and all the other wonderful things and wonderful people that I work with. And thank you. Thank you for the last 10 years. I appreciate it.
Mrs. Conley?
A big thank you to the folks at the Red Flannel Festival. That was an amazing Red Flannel Festival, so Nancy Diamond and who are, who's the other?
Board members, her son, her son-in-law.
Matt Andres. And Megan.
Megan isn't on the board, but there is a new, Anders on the board. They've been on the board since they were kids.
Just fabulous and all of the people, because these are people who are not paid. They do this, I was on the board 25 years ago, and it's an amazing thing with the, I mean, I really want to know a number because my money says it was like tens of thousands. It was, I've never seen that many people, and it was just phenomenal. And I'm sure it was good for the businesses, it was good for all of the people who got to come and be part of the community. And thank you to all the people who ran toilet paper, who were at city hall when I couldn't be here yet in the morning and who was running the Red Flannel Festival office so that folks could get things done. And it was just, it's our signature festival and it's, it was a big deal. So that was just big thanks to the folks from the Red Flannel Festival for making that happen. And then, vote, y'all. Vote, vote, vote. It was USA Day where I teach for homecoming weekend. Nothing is more American than voting. So thank you to Rebecca for making all of that happen and all of our folks who are coming in to run that election. Because we went from one day of voting to, how many? 10 total days of in-person voting. And we went from you had to have a reason to absentee vote to no. I argued with the previous clerk about why I was going to be out of town and she wanted proof. And I could not make that up. I was like, I was going to be in Chicago. And she's like, can you show me where your hotel is going to be? And I was like, can I just, now it's like, I can just vote absentee. So that's huge, right? And we've already got folks turning in their absentee ballots, which is amazing. And I'm, I know that the election is secure and safe and all of the things that it needs to be. Our audits come out perfect every time because our clerk is amazing. And you can vote with confidence and assuredness that your vote will count and will be secure and correct. So vote.
Mrs. Race?
What she said. We have the time to spend talking about Darla. It's always fun to talk about Darla, so. We're just so happy to have you here. Just such a light to all of us. It's different when you walk in the door here and we really appreciate everything you do. And of course, Rebecca, with what's going on right now, it's gotta be, your hair is gonna turn gray, I think. I don't know.
It's gonna fall out.
She's like, already. But we know it's so, so much work for you to do all that, so thank you so much for sticking through this. And you know, you have us to lean on if you need anything. And it's always just a blessing to be up here with all of you, so. And definitely vote, definitely vote. Thank you.
Well, again, you know, we keep saying it, but our staff is amazing. They help us so often and look for advice when they need it. I, I can't even fathom working this election. There's so many rules and like, like Ms. Falcon was saying, there's, every day there's something new and they're still changing stuff. And, and the voting date is coming up, so it's, it's amazing. And what do I say about Rose Powell? I'm gonna miss you. It's been wonderful. I love getting to know all of you. Knowing how you tick a little bit. And it's just great to have a bunch of different people with different views getting along and doing the best thing for the city. I, I really like that.
You're a wonderful mayor, by the way. You're, you're getting it, you're getting it.
Mayor? And we're gonna, we hope you're, stop, I'm glad you're gonna still be on all the other boards, but, and she'll be around town. She'll.
She's still, she's still alive.
In the area, yeah. I want to follow her around. That's why I had, that's why we had a Rose Powell Day, so I could follow you around one day. Yeah, we did. All right, we adjourned at 9:06.